I call this meeting of the Winnicott County Community School District School Board to order. Meeting notices were sent to members of the press, members of the school board and were posted on the front doors and/or vestibules of district school buildings as well as on its website. This is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public hearing. There's a time for public comment as indicated in the agenda and the meeting is also available to be watched live at www.youtube.com/winnicottani. If you'll join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Stelsner.
Here.
Zeller.
Here.
Ladu.
Here.
Verich.
Here.
Rank.
Here.
Cundy.
Here.
Hansen.
Recognizing the administrative team tonight, Mr. Jerabik and Dr. Larson. As well as visitors, I trust all of the visitors have signed the log at the door. If not, please do so. This is the time, open forum, this is the time for comments from the public as to items on our agenda tonight or items that you would like to see on a future agenda. If you have something to say, would you please step up to the microphone, state your name and go ahead?
Lysley Ranky, I have actually two things. The first one I'm wondering about is looking at our school funds for fees and such. There's some online forums where parents were having questions where they were getting requests to prove they paid for things and I know in the past we have had some fraudulent problems with the school lunch money, so I was just wondering if any of that kind of things were, could be at risk and if we have internal controls in place from prior mistakes to ensure that those kinds of things don't happen again. So I think that's like a second meeting, not for this one. And I also had a prepared statement for one of the agenda meetings that we had regarding going back to school. Is this working?
Yeah.
Okay. It sounds like I'm talking to myself, so I have. Mine's talking about informed consent. I believe informed consent, informed consent is a human right in health decisions. In this past year, we have been too lenient in allowing institutions to push boundaries in personal health choices. It is not the school district's place to enforce and mandate health decisions for our children. That is solely the parents' right. The CDC sets guidelines that is not hard and fast, one size fits all rules. For those that have blind faith in a political bias propaganda bureaucracy, that is their choice. I find it hard to accept where there are, where there are full white papers from which the CDC's recommendations come from that are not readily available for public inspection. Papers referenced are not from neutrally funded sources and they lack statistical confidence intervals and mainstream statistical interpretations lack benchmarks and are used to confuse and skew public perception of risk. Looking at the risk, I ask that, I ask that health autonomy be left up to the parents and child. Medical procedures like drugs, masks, vaccines need to be optional. Where there is risk, there needs to be choice. I have removed my children from Winnicott County School District as I value their physical, social, mental, emotional and spiritual well-being. I was not willing to sacrifice one for the marginal benefit of the other four. I will re-enroll my children when things are back as they should be. In the meantime, we like others are living normally, normal lives as we are socially, mentally, emotionally and spiritually made to do. If you are not aware, a huge percentage of us have been living our normal lives except when we go into those brick and mortar buildings. We play the game as many of you sitting here already probably have. It's time. It's time to make masking optional. It's time to have parents decide what is in the best interest of their children. It is time to get back to education and get the kids' health decisions back into the hands of the parents and it's time to see those smiles. Thanks.
Anyone else? Then I will close the open forum session of our meeting and move into the open session. Looking for a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Verich, seconded by Ladu. Roll call please.
Stelsner.
Aye.
Zeller.
Aye.
Ladu.
Aye.
Verich.
Aye.
Rank.
Aye.
Cundy.
Aye.
Models of learning. Dr. Larson?
Thank you. At your places board and up there, there's our last update on our COVID cases in the school district along with our trend data. And then you can see our recommendation to the board is right on your agenda. We are recommending that masks become optional after this evening or effective tomorrow. It still should be noted, we are going to be practicing COVID protocol as far as hand washing, sanitizing, physical distancing when we can because unfortunately COVID's still there. But we just feel now's the time to have masking be optional. In your board packet, you will see a draft letter that if the board were to pass masking as optional, just an explanation of what that exactly means for families.
Very good. Any discussion by the board?
I move to make masking optional pursuant to the administration's recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Verich, seconded by Cundy. Roll call please.
Zeller.
I actually have to, but I have to choose to abstain. I support. I'm going to choose to abstain. I, I support this measure as the medical advisor and I also support it as the board member. Given a community member's concern of conflicts of interest with these roles, I'm gonna, despite district council finding that unsubstantiated, I'm gonna abstain from, from the medical role, but I do support.
Ladu.
Aye.
Verich.
Aye.
Cundy.
Aye.
Stelsner.
I'm sorry, I should have asked this earlier. This is just masking, not quarantining?
Just masking.
Just masking?
So aye.
And Rank.
Aye.
Sorry, just let me get there, please. Yes, in your packet, you have summer contracts. These are basically the same as they have been. However, Mike Minier is taking over the nonviolent crisis intervention support role and we're asking for Mrs. Crowsey to potentially have some extra hours in the summer because we're just not sure how this is all going to shake out. We don't know that we'll need them, but we wanted to have them approved just in case.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Cundy, seconded by Verich.
Ladu.
Ladu, sorry. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Ladu.
Aye.
Verich.
Aye.
Cundy.
Aye.
Stelsner.
Aye.
Zeller.
Rank.
Aye. HR recommendations from the listening sessions. Mrs. Verich, I understand that you're addressing this.
I am. Give me one second while I get to this page. So, so support listening session took place about a month ago and it was really nice to hear everyone. It was my first opportunity to do it. One of the, they requested several things and we, we were able to accommodate a lot of those. One was the insurance option. They wanted the HSA contributions to continue and which we've agreed to do so. And we're doing a bi-annual or bi-annual school year deposit of those funds. They also requested that we do a percentage increase to their wages rather than just per hour amount and we did do that. They also had some requests about personal days, which we did agree to change that up and, you know, for more of those, those employees who have been here for a long time to encourage that longevity, we are adding on personal days. And so that's pretty much it for the support staff. The administration, the professional staff, they mimicked a lot of the similar requests as the support staff. They too, they were really concerned about the HSA contributions and that will continue just like the support staff. We regularly analyze and review the professional staff compensation model because that, the compensation did come up and that's up for review in 2022, 23. And then the staff really liked the full days for professional development rather than those half days on Fridays. So we are going to continue the full days of professional development next upcoming school year. And then they also wanted to continue, although we didn't need it this year, where we have a traditional snow day for one and two days and then after that we go virtual for any additional days, just so we will always have a hard end to the school year. And I'm, I'm happy to report, we pretty much were able to accommodate all of their requests, so.
Very good, thank you. Any questions from the board? Mr. Cundy, WCSD policy updates.
Did you want a motion for that? Yeah. Because it involves that personal day change especially.
Oh, true. Well, I will make a motion to, to approve the recommendations by the HR committee for, for the, that came out of the listening session for support staff and professional staff.
Motion by Ladu, seconded by Zeller. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Verich.
Aye.
Cundy.
Aye.
Stelsner.
Aye.
Zeller.
Aye.
Ladu.
Aye.
Rank.
Aye. Now, Mr. Cundy. Policies.
Okay, we do have a number of policies to go over tonight, thank you. And our committee of Jackie and Becky and myself, we met prior to the meeting tonight. And so if we do get off track a little bit because of the way it was listed or so or located, just kind of try to keep us on a straight and narrow so that we get through these.
Yeah, look at the agenda that was at your place versus the one that was printed and then we'll, we'll all be in the same place, I think.
Okay, and the first one is policy number 2430, copy of district sponsored clubs and On this policy here, on the first page of 9A, we're looking at the bottom paragraph, no non-district sponsored organization may use the name and so on, as you read the new language. We are recommending that that would be not included in this policy. And just a question that I had brought up on this policy here as far as district sponsored clubs, and I reviewed this with Peggy earlier, just so that I had understanding that homeschool students are allowed to involve and be participating in school sponsored organization events, prokial school and any other enrolled out of, of our district are not allowed to participate in our school district clubs and so on. So just wanted to understand the fact of who can participate and who can't based on their choice for education.
Mark, what's the rationale to 2430 to change the nature of allowed clubs and organizations and district sponsorship?
Are you talking about, excuse me, the last paragraph that we wanted to take out? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
One of the examples that we're talking on is how we can control organizations outside of the school to use our name and our mascot and so on. And an example was, as an example with the wolf, you know, the way the tongue is positioned on the wolf head and so on, you know, to control all that. And, you know, we, we have different groups out there that are and are not related to the school that are using our, our logo and so on, but to control that, is that something that we, you know, unless of course it's in, in a condition that's not, you know, in viewing purpose of, of good sense, we just felt as though that this part didn't need to be a part of this policy.
Yeah, we're thinking of clubs like WIDC, Hoops Club, things like that. Peg really doesn't want to, and the district doesn't want to get into policing every time. WIDC might have a water bottle on it that has a Winnicott County Wolf or a uniform and so forth. So the opportunity to be branded as a Winnicott County Wolf, the various basketball teams and so forth. And then how, how do, how do, if we adopted that as a policy, how we go about enforcing all of that for all of the related student youth organizations?
Does that answer your question, Bob?
It does. My immediate reaction would be that I see both sides of it. A brand is an extremely powerful thing and when you lose control of your brand, it becomes cheaper. And in my estimation, by deleting that paragraph, we run that risk.
We did have a lot of discussion on that and in all honesty, I remember years back when we did have a little of, I don't want to say misuse of our logo and so on and maybe some of the colors, variations and so on and so forth. So that was discussed and it was a concern of ours. But just to be able to monitor and man and make sure that we're in control of all of those that are out there. As an example, even if you'd have a crafty individual that would go ahead and, you know, put it on a shirt or something, you know, are we going to start to, you know, be manning and monitoring all of those or, of course, we don't want misuse and so on, but maybe we're not at the point yet where what you're saying as far as branding and we certainly understand that. Anything further, Bob?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
The next policy, policy 5517.01 on bullying. This policy we brought back and we may have to do a little additions to this after I spoke with a couple of the board members here after we got back. One of the questions was when I read at the prior review of this policy, cyber bullies hack into or otherwise gain access to another's electronic accounts as an example, email, social media, et cetera, and posing as that individual with the intent to embarrass or harm the individual. I think the question was understanding social media as it is, whether it's texting or all the other different methods of social media. Through our policy, does social media actually have to be indicated in the language or is this enough of understanding of the policy?
I think the spot Jill, that now that I'm looking at it again, it was, it was bullet D where it lists cyber bullying that, that first time. Social media is missing there.
Right, and that's.
That's where you'd like to see it.
Well, right, because, because you see cyber bullying in quotes, that's the official definition that we are adopting with this policy. And if you don't have social media in there, I mean honestly, kids aren't using email. They're not using text messaging. They certainly, they probably aren't using instant messaging. They're using social media. And so that's where I feel it needs to be added. Now, it is, it is later on in that policy listed, but I, I think Neola just missed it, you know? It just say, I mean, if, if someone's accused of cyber bullying and it's on a social media, it's Snapchat, I would say it's not, I wouldn't say it's in violation of this. So that's, I just don't want to have one of those loopholes.
Makes sense.
When we're taking all this time to go through these policies and make sure they're up to date.
How would I add it right after communication technologies such as social media?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And Jill, we certainly understand that we discussed that, you know, the placement throughout this policy as possibly your concern, but we just wanted to understand for sure what you were saying and then we would certainly approve that.
Yeah, that'd be the only, what Peg just mentioned, that'd be the only change I would recommend and then I think we're, we're good.
And we have one other spot within the policy that we talked on and it's the last page of the policy and it's under the notification where it says, notice of this policy will be annually distributed to all students enrolled in the school district, their parents and/or guardians and employees. The policy will also be distributed to organizations in the community having cooperative agreements with the schools. Additionally, the policy will be posted in conspicuous locations in all school buildings and departments within the district and discussed with students. Before I read on further, we have thought of wanting to take out the language. The policy will be posted in conspicuous locations of the school buildings because no one is really sure where they're posted other than on the website and of course they are in the student handbooks. So.
I'm guessing it would be in the office and I don't know what good that would do. And I don't, I don't want to pick a specific bulletin board that, it just gets difficult to find the right spot for that and I'll be honest, to keep them updated too.
Right.
It's kind of tedious, but we do have all of our policies on our website. We are thinking about developing a separate like page within our district with all the, I'm going to say, policies that were being directed to post more specifically, so.
I, I mean, I, I think that makes sense because even if you post this, who's going to sit and read it?
I.
And we do, we have no bullying in every building.
Right.
And so I, you know, I, I don't have an issue with that.
Thank you.
And to your point Peggy of making our policies maybe a little bit more visible to get to, I think is a great idea. I know I have been seeing and hearing a few things out in the community to make sure that our policies are out there so people understand them and know where they're at.
Yes, they all are on our district website, but I do appreciate too that maybe certain ones just need to have their own page.
Right.
The more often looked at ones are needed ones.
Okay, bring an add policy back. That was the changes that we had. Is there any other questions on that policy or we will move forward? The next policy on class rank, policy 5430. At our last board meeting, we did talk about the LAUDI system and this is the policy on class rank. And this was in the information when we did talk about the LAUDI system at the last board meeting. So as it's listed, we had no problems with the, with the policy as listed.
Just the change over.
Yep.
So, Becky, anything?
Nope.
Okay. The next policy, I'm going to try to figure out where I got it. Oh, here it is. Okay, because of the order here.
Yep.
Policy 5540, investigations involving suspected child abuse. Any questions on that language at all or?
The change?
The changes that are listed in the third paragraph?
Let me refine that.
Okay. Policy 7230, gifts, grants and bequests. As the new language is in there, with the dollar amount of any equipment with a value of a hundred dollars or proposed to be purchased by a parent organization or non-district entity for use in a school, on district property or the district related event shall be submitted to the district administrator for analysis prior to the purchase. And of the value of recognition, we are in agreeance with the fact that we acknowledge and formally acknowledge any donations that are within the twenty dollar range and sometimes even less. Because as a district, we certainly appreciate the fact of anyone that can, to give or give grant or bequest anything upon it for our district. So that's why in our policy, we've changed it from the recommendation to two fifty down to twenty dollars. And also all the donations that are given to the district are approved in our consent agenda item areas, as well as there's a thank you that is written to each of the individual for the giving.
Mm-hmm.
And the other, other question, the other question we talked about with this policy is, and this is, this may sound small, but in some situations when individuals give gifts or whether it could be tools to the district or equipment, remember that once it is given to the district, it is turned over and it does become district property. All ready? The next policy, policy 8405, copy of environmental health and safety program. Halfway down where it indicates an employee designated to serve as the IEQ coordinator for the district and that is our buildings and grounds manager, Steve Katie. And then as we further go down through there, the other new language is the district shall provide a copy of the plan implemented to any person upon request. Within our school buildings, of course, we do have the safety handbooks, the binders and so on, and within our science areas of chemicals being used, we have Mrs. Heidi Sam and Mrs. Holly, excuse me Peggy for her last name.
Pershing.
Pershing. So we do have individuals in place for the health and safety and the proper usage of chemicals within our district. And as you follow through this policy to the last part of it, we do not have administrative guidelines for this policy and as well, if you see the policies that are listed down below that are related policies to this one, and we have reviewed those as far as school safety and reporting accidents and so on within our district, within this policy. The next policy, policy 8451 is on head lice. And this has been nurse reviewed before it came to us as well from our policies. It's pretty self-explanatory as you read through the new language and of course, we do have a procedure or policy in place of no live lice as a criterion for the return of school if there is any determined head lice. The next policy, policy 9130, public request, suggestion or complaints. Quite a bit of new language in there, pretty self-explanatory. We didn't really have any questions on the new language at all within the policy. I don't know if there's any other questions that you may have. Remember, these policies are already current policies, there's just some updated language according to law, legal and/or statute. And our policy 9700, relations with non-school affiliated groups. And our policy 9700, uh, relations with non-school affiliated groups. Um, this one as well, as we were wanting, uh, to go through this policy is the question of the last paragraph, uh, whether or not we would leave this in or take it out, and, um, we would be, uh, would we taken, taken this out of the policy as well, that last paragraph? And that surrounds your question, Mr. Rank from prior, uh, policy. Uh, when we matched up both of these policies, we felt that the last paragraph would also be taken out of this policy. Policy number nine.
Just a quick question. I assume, like, I, I keep thinking back to, to the Community Arts Center. I assume there's, for non-school groups, there's a separate contract that they enter into to use that, so that's kind of covered already?
Yes. Yes, yep. And we don't wanna get confused at all with anything that has to do with naming rights and so on and so forth, because remember, we do have a policy on that as far as any naming of facilities or buildings or so on and so forth, um, that falls under a different policy. Policy 9700.01, advertising and commercial activities. As you, you, you read down through this, there are quite a few check marks that are within the options. Um, one thing I brought up is, I wanted to understand for sure if we had any policy or any contracts out there of exclusivity as far as like Pepsi and so on, and we do not. Pepsi provides us the machines, but we don't have any contract as far as, uh, exclusivity with them. So, one of the examples, of course, is across our building, you know, if we, if we did have a contract, we would have to go with their water, and at times, you know, groups and so on have water within our, our machines from the local Piggly Wiggly and so on and so forth. So we don't have any contract with Pepsi at all, they just provide, uh, the machines for us across the district. On the second page, um, as we are reading down through, we do not want an X in, uh, letter D, market research. And as we're reading down through the end of option number two underneath there, that paragraph, you see where the Xs are noted. Uh, we did have some discussion on this, uh, quite a bit of discussion actually amongst the committee, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that we decided to leave that in?
The, the first paragraph?
Yes.
After the end of option two? Yes.
Yes.
We did, yep, with district being checked versus any of those, um, approvals coming to the board.
Okay.
We would allow that for the, for the district to decide.
And as we're reading down through under general advertising guidelines, we felt as though additional marking should be in letter B. An advertising that may come, may become a permanent part of a school requires prior approval of the board. We eliminated the or semi-permanent, to make it become a permanent part of the school requires prior approval of the board.
And by permanent, we decided ten plus years of visibility on the school grounds.
Okay.
I, I got a question.
Yep.
This is going back to the end of option two. And what you're, what you're proposing, it says it is further the policy of the board that its name, students, staff members and district facilities shall not be used for promoting the interests of any non-school agency or organization, public or private, without the specific written permission of the district. I, I don't see how we can dictate students in that scenario, um, because, I mean, I, I think that's more of a parental thing, and I don't.
Sometimes we gave requests to release student names.
Okay.
We, um, we, oh, so sorry, David. Sorry, let me start over. Um, in the past, we used to get requests for releasing everybody in the sixth grade.
Okay.
Like, maybe it's for a pageant or things like that. So if a parent did not, in the beginning of the year, say, I don't wish my students'
Okay.
Uh, directory data, information to be released, we would have to release that.
Okay.
So, and this goes along with advertising, so I'm gonna guess that Billy Bob Smith is the greatest sixth grade basketball player in the world and Nike wants to sponsor him, that would be something that we would not endorse.
So this is just more of these, like, mass mailings?
Yes.
Like, okay.
And advertising.
Advertising, okay, great.
Okay. As we go to the next page, and you notice, of course, the letters are, are Xed except M we did not, and Q we did not, um, put in as a recommendation. And also the next con, uh, part of the contract or policy that says written contract for placement, that whole part of that, um, we felt as though we wanted to eliminate, um, because we, we don't wanna have it that we have to control parent contracts, or if a parent wants, you know, to, to give or so or, or put in for sports and so on and so forth, if we have to have a contract with every parent and every individual to man that and monitor that could, could really be, uh, you know, subdue us to an enormous amount of extra labor and work plus to keep them straight. So that portion of that policy from the written contract part of it, we would recommend that that would be omitted from the policy. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Is that it, done? Yep. That's, that is it for the policies.
Is there a motion to take action on these policies?
I'll move that we adopt policy updates 2430, 5517.01, 5430, 5540, 7230, 8405, 8451, 9130, 9700, and 9700.01.
Second.
Is that as amended as we discussed or not as presented?
Yes, those would be with the changes and the amendments within the policies.
Thank you.
Motion by Zeller, seconded by Cundy. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Cundy, aye, Stelsner.
Aye.
Zeller.
Aye.
Ladu.
Aye.
Verich.
Aye.
Rank.
Aye.
Mrs. Larson, is there anything that you wanna comment on regarding the administrative reports?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Board reports, any communications?
Uh, yes, I have a couple. One is from Monica Wazinski. District administrator and school board, thank you so much for the extra teacher-staff appreciation gestures these past few weeks. It feels nice to be thought of and a part of the district. And I have one other thank you from Ed and Remy Blech to the Winnie County Committee School Board Administration gratefully acknowledging and thanking you, thanking you for your kind expression of sympathy, the family of Stanley Blech. I have just one thing as a board member. The CISA six delegate convention is coming up the 16th of June, and I will be attending that in Oshkosh at CISA six.
Committee reports, HR.
Uh, none, I, I, no, no, we're good. We, are we, I don't think we're meeting anytime too soon either. No, no, we're good, we had a lot going on.
Financial planning, we have a, a meeting coming up, uh, this Friday. PR and marketing.
We have a meeting this Friday?
And policy.
I believe unless we got a few other ones that we are looking at, um, we have came to the position of maybe next meeting not having policies.
Would you repeat that, please?
I'm sure we can search and look if we want.
No, thank you. At this time, then, I would, uh, entertain a motion for the board to move into executive session under, uh, section nineteen dot eighty-five, to approve executive session minutes from May seventeenth, and, uh, also, uh, nineteen dot eighty-five, sub ones, of C and G for the purpose of discussing personnel matters related to the employment of an individual which the school board has jurisdiction. And, uh, the board will move back into open session following closed session and may take action on items that were discussed in closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Verich, seconded by Ladu. Roll call, please.
Stelsner.
Aye.
Zeller.
Aye.